We're on. Got it. Excellent. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the San Francisco Board of Trustees Meeting of the Hayward Area Shoreline Planning Agency. Today is August 10th, 2023, and we are beginning at video two. And I'm D. Rosario from the East Bay Regional Park District Board of Directors, and I represent Ward Two. And I'm standing in today for Chair Dennis Watzke, who is on vacation. So, Dennis, would you please do a roll call?
Yes. Francisco Romano, David Hayward. And Boo Andrade.
Here.
In for.
All parties of the Hayward Shoreline District.
Yes. Thank you. And I'm Devon Reeve, Principal Planner of the East Bay Regional Park District. Now I'll do a roll call of prospective HASPA trustees. Eric Henshaw.
Here.
With Alameda County, Mesquita Abeyan Control District, Abeyan District. And we know that Rita Duncan with Oregon Sanitary could not be here. She's at a conference today. So now I'll announce the staff who are present at today's meeting. Amanda Sanders, our Senior Administrative Specialist running the Zoom meeting today. Thank you, Amanda. Amy Willis, planner. And other members of our Technical Advisory Committee, including Brian Masco from HARD, Taylor Richard from City of Hayward. I see Jackie Zipkin from EBD. And Marilyn Latta from the State Coastal Conservancy. Let's make sure no one else is missing from the TAC. Oh, I'm sorry. The most important person on our TAC today is Erica from the Mesquita Abeyan Control District. We are so indebted to the Abeyan District for hosting us today with refreshments and this wonderful conference room and this up-to-date technology that's allowing us to have a meeting today. So, thank you.
You said. That's it. So today's meeting is held pursuant to the Brown Act. Board members and staff are participating in person. The public can participate via phone or video conferencing. And public comments may be submitted one of two ways, and Devon will please explain.
Thank you. Yes, public comments for these meetings are is handled either by email to a.sanders@ubparks.org by noon today or live via Zoom. If you are a member of the public and want to comment, you can use your raised hand option. So let's see, Amanda, have there been any public comments submitted so far?
No, there have not.
Okay, let me ask to the virtual community, is there anyone who would like to speak today from Zoom? You just raise your hand. Okay.
I see no raised hands.
Okay. So no public comments at today's meeting?
Great. We got them. Now we'll go to our business. Our first order is approval of minutes of May 11th, 2023. Motion is moved. So moved. Francisco, there's again.
Also.
Okay. Excellent.
Okay, let's take that roll call vote then. Trustees Romano.
Yes.
Trustee Andrade.
Yes.
And Chair Rosario.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Great. Item number two, City Hayward Project Updates.
Hello, Patty. There are no new major development or planning projects within the HASPA shoreline area.
That's our phone.
Yeah.
Moving right along. Everything aside, we were treating presentation and letter of support for EPA Water Quality Improvement Grant. Devon.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Caitlin Sweeney with the San Francisco Estuary Partnership, who has a presentation about a very important land opportunity for HASPA and Hayward Shoreline in general that we're going to be discussing a little bit later today. So we'll turn it over to Caitlin.
Great, thank you so much. It's a pleasure to be here this afternoon. Again, my name is Caitlin Sweeney. I'm the Director of the San Francisco Estuary Partnership. For anybody who is less familiar with us, we're actually a program under US EPA, part of the National Estuary Program. But we are hosted locally by the Association of Area Governments and the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. So we are part of the ABAIC MTC family. I thank you so much for this time on your agenda to come talk to you about a project proposal that we've been developing with a suite of partners and ask for your support. My colleague Heidi Nutters presented to the TAC last week, and I know many of you in the room or online were at that meeting. And some of our close project partners are also here so they can correct me if I say anything wrong about what we are planning to do. But with that, let me share my screen and walk you through this a little bit. Okay, so. I can get my. So just an overall description of the project. We have a catchy title as one must have, and you must have a semicolon also with grant proposals. They've got to be very long. But essentially, it's pivot points, and the idea, it's called Moving Nature-Based Solutions for Water Quality Improvement and Shoreline Adaptation from Planning to Action. And I think the critical components of that title are from planning to action. This is, the grant is really focused on building in all the incredible planning work that we've been doing in the region and particularly in the Hayward area and moving to action. We have a suite of wonderful partners onboard that are listed here. And this is a funding opportunity through US EPA, through the San Francisco Bay Water Quality Improvement Fund. This is a competitive grant program that is appropriated every year. It's been around for maybe a dozen years or so. The Estuary Partnership has a long history, successful history of applying for this particular fund source. There's a really nice connection between this fund source and the work that we do. So here we are again. And just to give you a rough idea, the proposal amount, we're looking at about a four and a half million dollar proposal. It's a one-to-one match requirement, so another four and a half million in matching funds for about a nine million dollar grant proposal. And again, what we're really looking at is bridging that planning with action. So we want to specifically advance implementation of nature-based solutions, or MBS, that can both, you know, meet the urgent needs that we are facing for shoreline resilience with respect to sea level rise and flooding and other climate impacts, while also improving the bay water quality. Again, the name of this fund source is the Water Quality Improvement Fund, so that's a really critical component. And we want to, on a regional scale, address those critical gaps in moving NBS or nature-based solutions from planning to implementation. So this would include, you know, addressing permitting challenges, governance and management, funding, community engagement, facilitating technology and information transfer, that sort of thing. And we're specifically interested in advancing implementation of the HASPA Master Plan. You know, HASPA and the Master Plan have long been held as a model for the region and well beyond. And we really want to support that model in moving from the plan stage to the, to implementation and really supporting the work that you all do. So I'll talk a little bit more about some of the specific project activities that are most remain to you. So we're looking at developing a implementation plan and permitting strategy for the Master Plan. So getting a consultant onboard, this would go through, the subaward would go through East Bay Regional Park District, and then would sub out to a consultant to really think about how we move from, again, planning to implementation. And I have another slide on that with a little bit more detail in the moment. And then identifying, you know, a ready-to-go project within the HASPA plan planning area, which would be the first mile horizontal levy, so moving that project continually forward. And then again, this regional sort of technology transfer outreach component. So for the HASPA Master Plan, the implementation plan and permitting strategy, we're really thinking about, you know, identifying how you prioritize projects, what projects should go first. You know, again, how do you move from this really excellent subregional planning document to continuing to coordinate, collaborate on implementation? So, you know, who are the project champions? How will the risk and responsibilities associated with each project be shared among all of the projects and all of the partners? What is the funding strategy? What are the funding opportunities? And then also in terms of governance, I know you're in the middle of renegotiating your JPA and wanting to continue to support that work and thinking about long-term governance and maintenance of the projects and, you know, of the HASPA area in general. So what sort of planning or strategic support might be needed for that, for that process? For the first mile project, we really want to get everything in place, ready for shovels. So this would fund not only design and permitting, but also community engagement so that we are ready to go for the next fund source to break ground on this project. That would be the idea. In terms of next steps, the proposal is due in a matter of moments, August 30th. We would expect to hear back whether or not we were successful by October, hopefully. And then in terms of the project timeframe, they're generally four-year projects that would go likely from January 24th through December of '27. So we are now in the process of refining our proposal, really, you know, digging into that budget and narrative and gathering our letters of support, which is why we are here today to ask for a letter of support from the HASPA Board of Trustees. You see others listed here on the slide that we have or in the process of receiving letters of support from. And also a question mark to you if you think there are others that we should be seeking letters of support from. I'd be very interested in hearing that. And then not to spend too much time on the details, but I did think it was worth just showing you a little bit of the cost elements so you get a better sense of the detailed cost elements of the proposal. On the left-hand side is sort of our ask, that 4.4 million, and then the right side of the table are possible sources of match. The match requirements are on the project as a whole, not on a per-task basis. So we're just looking at cumulatively trying to get up to 4.4 million. So running quickly down the first side of the spreadsheet here. We're looking at about 750,000 for the implementation plan, and then another 100,000 again to be thinking about how to best support governance into the future. And that would be a subaward going to the Regional Park District, and then, you know, out through a consultant, through them. For the first mile project to get us through design and permitting, that's about a little over 1.2 million. EBD has volunteered to be the subawardee for that. And again, you know, money out the door for a consultant to continue that work. We have about 50,000 in there for first mile community engagement plan and outreach activities. And then this last line, technology transfer and MBS state of play, this is again sort of this regional, how can we advance MBS regionally? Where are the sticking points? What is our state of play currently? And how can we provide sort of a roadmap for going forward in terms of, again, governance, permitting, funding, et cetera? So we've got some great partners onboard there, including Save the Bay, which would be undertaking, they'd be undertaking an effort to engage and educate our elected officials, really identifying those next sort of champions for this kind of work around the region and continuing to uplift our current champions. And then other sort of, again, tech transfer, knowledge transfer, information sharing activities throughout the region. I've listed the possible sources of match. I'm happy to go into detail. This is where things get a little bit more fuzzy as we continue to seek out sources of match. But just briefly, one possible source is the ongoing work currently funded by the Bay Area Toll Authority to redesign the bridge approach. And thinking about going to open road tolling and how the bridge approach needs to be redesigned. That work is ongoing, but I think there's a great opportunity there to align that with the vision in the HASPA Master Plan for the northern edge of the bridge and, you know, around the corner to the Oliver Salt Ponds. So that's a nice nexus. East Bay Regional Parks District has a funded project in the Berkeley North Basin funded by the San Francisco Bay Restoration Authority that is also advancing MBS. So there's some nice lessons learned, opportunity for knowledge transfer with that project. And then the Union Sanitary District has a massive site upgrade, enhanced treatment and site upgrade project that we can use some of that for a match, again, supporting the first mile specifically. And Save the Bay also is doing other work around the region, advancing MBS in terms of planting and other outreach efforts. So they may be able to bring some match to the table. So this is kind of a brief snapshot and want to spend, dig in too much and waste too much of your time, but really, again, thank you for this opportunity, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. We'll stop sharing.
Wonderful. Open up for discussion. Yes. But thank you, Caitlin, for the presentation. What is the estimated cost of the first mile hard obstacle levy?
We have in there, I believe, 1.2 million dollars to take it to a shovel-ready in terms of how much it may cost to actually construct. I do not know. Maybe Jackie has an estimate, but I think we're, you know, it's probably, I don't know, Jackie, five, 10 million? It's expensive project.
At least, we're currently under the grant that we're, that's also from the same source of funding, Water Quality Improvement Fund. We're currently working on the 30% design, and in the next couple of months, that will include a cost estimate, but we don't have that quite yet.
Okay, thank you. Good report. And by the way, it is Hayward talking about the old bridge, not the summer building.
Can I say Sam Mateo?
Terrible.
Any other questions in the poll? Interesting. Eric, Paul, Chris, any other discussion? Any couple of comments? Seeing down here, any other, done anything on screen?
It does not look like there's any comments on screen.
I guess there's no, if there's no current discussion, then Chris, it needs to be maybe a month to approve. Letter?
Yeah, I'd just like to be clear that this is attached to in the packet. This is a draft letter to be approved by the board that would go in support of this application that San Francisco Bay Project is preparing. And that the, I'll just note that the total budget for HASPA in terms of that implementation plan or some of the governance issues, we're still working those details out. We're still working out the local match part. Certainly, in-kind staff time is going to be part of it. But I was very appreciative of Caitlin and her staff who had done a lot of work to prepare this application. Very short. But I don't know.
Good letter. Yeah. Give the motion on board. Okay, we have a motion. Second, Paul. So.
I can go for a vote? Yes, I can take the roll. So Trustees Romano.
Yes.
Trustee Hodges.
Yes.
And Chair Rosario.
Yes.
And the motion passage.
And that brings us to item number four. The potential HASPA administrative stuff, but didn't have duties.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, there's a discussion item here with two attachments. Attachment 3.1, which are a memo describing the administrative duties of what it takes to run HASPA. And the Park District has been doing it for the last couple of years. Before that, Taylor and Eric at City Hayward were doing it for about five years. So we wanted to be very transparent to the board and to the public about what it actually takes because the ultimate goal is that we would hire a third-party administrator to do most of this work. So in attachment 3.1, there's a memorandum that's basically like a job description of all the different duties to run the organization that is HASPA. And attachment 3.2 is something pretty brand-new which advances the question of, well, how much would it actually cost to do this work? And I was able to speak with a public group that basically does this work for hire. There's also private consultants who do third-party administration. So combining all that information, I prepared this table with four different components, and I'd like to just take a minute and go over that. And the discussion for you all is, you know, is this accurate? Am I missing something? Should I look closer at certain budgets? Because what we're trying to do is get to a point where this board knows how much its annual budget's going to be. And by knowing that number, we can start using some special formulas in the new JPA agreement about how the dues will be structured. Because today, and you have a later item that talks about our current dues, which are $12,000 for the three agencies. Now, we're trying to expand HASPA and bring in different agencies with different, you know, budgets. But we're going to save that discussion for a future meeting. Today, I just wanted to hone in on duties to run HASPA and the costs. So that's the goal here. So maybe I'll just simply share my screen so the public can see as well. Okay, hold on just a moment. So. Amanda, can you see this memorandum? Yes, it looks like you can. Great. So I just want to explain, there's sort of four different components to a scope of what a third-party administrator would do. The first is master plan evaluation and implementation. Well, that's basically what this EPA grant could potentially pay for if we were successful, SFVP is successful. But if they're not, we wanted to put a cost at what it would cost to develop priority criteria, come up with an implementation plan, and do some secret evaluation. So we're looking at about $70,000 there, and that's a different amount than the grant amount of that MBS. Then there's just the actual administration of HASPA, where HASPA policies and priorities need to be developed. Once we have our JPA agreement, there's still a lot of work to do. You need a Technical Advisory Committee manual. We need a board, board of future management, all those things that have yet to come. And then, of course, we need the effort to expand the HASPA board and TAC membership. So that's all work ahead. Then there's the preparation of the meeting, the managing the meetings, all of which the Park District could have been doing. So that's assumed to be about 50,000. Then there's the transparency side of things, you know, Brown Act meetings, noted things, really zooming out, management, preparing the meeting minutes, doing Form 700 files, all of that's sort of part of our public obligation as a public agency. We're looking at about 30,000 for that. And then the finance side to HASPA. We need to invoice and collect dues. There's a budget. We haven't prepared one yet, but we will for next year. And there's annual reporting that goes to the state. And then finally, there's a community engagement side, which has to do with, how do we let the public know about HASPA? I know we have some members in the public today, which is great. We want to do more. We want HASPA to be known by everybody who uses the shoreline and people who benefit from the shoreline being protected from sea level rise. So I just want to note that Director Watzke, our Chair, took a look at that third row, transparency, and the dollar amount there. He felt it was a bit high because the hybrid meetings are really an option under the Brown Act. And so he felt like that could be a dollar amount that gets reduced because maybe we don't do hybrid meetings. Well, maybe in the future, just do in-person meetings. As it turns out, we need to do these recordings anyway. It helps us write the minutes of staff. And the cost of doing a Zoom meeting is not so expensive. So if you were here, I would explain again that we'll probably just continue to do the hybrid meetings, but, you know, maybe we can find some budget savings elsewhere. So that will add up to $200,000, and that will be an annual amount. And that's basically what we've been talking about hypothetically in the past couple of meetings, 150,000, 200,000. But it's a lot more than $36,000, I recognize, and that's what HASPA's basically been running for the last couple of years, almost five years now, maybe more. So I'll stop sharing, and again, I'd just like to hear the board's thoughts and public's comments as well.
Questions? Interesting. Is there anything to be learned from the Iron Horse Trail?
The agreements to keep the Iron Horse Trail running and operating?
From the beginning.
Well, that's a familiar history. Could you explain a little bit about it?
Well, the Iron Horse Trail goes through, I don't know how many municipalities, but they all had to come together to agree on things and also have a contingent behind them. I didn't know if there's anything worthy enough in there that that helped us. Is this the one that was by the railroad?
Yeah, by the railroad tracks.
Or it's not, I don't, it's not that. This goes all the way up to Walnut Creek and down to Pleasant.
Runs through Hayward by the railroad canal?
No, no.
Oh, it's a run, okay.
Standard on, okay.
Yeah, the former railroad right away that turned into a regional train.
I wanted Hayward to live off of, like, turning to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Your apologies. Thank you. I mean, we have a trail manager who I can speak with about that, and if there's agreements that are going, then we'll definitely take a look.
Thank you. And maybe you might have looked at, it's, you know, it's old and it's the La Jolla. The original date in there.
Did that also produce a regional trail?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the La Jolla Trail.
Okay.
There might be something in there. It's so old now, but it's been around for ages since 1976.
Okay, good. Two good examples. We'll take a look.
Also, regarding number three, transparency, I think transparency, transparency to me means the more options the public can participate, the better. And I think even the dividend count will be, we meet that goal. Agreed, yeah. Regarding, so the 200,000, so are you, if you hire a third-party administrator, is that going to go to one person or are you hiring a team?
I think the assumption is that there would be both an administrator and a grants writer, meaning someone who part-time would seek grants, the way SFVP is doing on our behalf, when we're participating in their grants. We want someone in-house for HASPA to do that work. We can't just rely on East Bay Parks or any of the other trustee agency grants folks to do that.
So I mean, this is a big, this is a, that's a lot of duties. I mean, you just have two people, an executive director and a planner, you said? Oh, grant writer, grant writer. That's still a lot of work for two people. Especially to the community engagement part.
Yes.
So would do you be I'm saying like, you have an executive director, and then he's going to have the toll man resources from the members of the JPA anywhere on top of that.
Yeah, that's a very important point. I should be clear that the Park District is going to continue to administer HASPA for foreseeable future until we have our new JPA agreement and specify how it rotates. And so the Park District will continue to do the staffing. So if community engagement scope of work is identified, and we'll all agree to it, then it's very likely that the Park District staff will take on components of that.
Okay. I wonder if you've got the bandwidth for that? Sounds like.
So far, we haven't.
You can see member agencies lending somebody, lending another person personnel staff members to ensure that the second person actually care of that job. That was my question too. I was thinking one person, and then the grant writer is a very good idea. One other question I have. I don't, do we need something about trail management or studies for future trails? So as one of the duties, we have trails, ensure that you're both who keep track or clean them and do whatever needs to be done, but maybe that could be another duty that needs to be added on so that the person could also see how do we expand trails, what do we need to modify, and et cetera. So that may be considered adding that.
Okay, thank you. Well, I don't see Robbie Perry, who's the Hayward Shoreline Supervisor for the Park District, but his team is out there keeping, maintaining the current trail system, at least the parts that the Park District has agreed to or that we own. And I know he's often finding, you know, riprap that's been damaged during, sometimes there's strong events, and he's doing smaller repairs, but it's probably larger repair work, what needs to happen. Plus, we've got our Hayward Marsh project that will have some new routing of the bay trail, so. So thank you for that idea. Yeah, we'll consider adding trail, trail operations, trail expansion to this work.
That should be one of the added, one of the duties of this person, in my mind. The community engagement, in my mind, is very, very important because it also entails being present in the community to ensure that people know what HASPA is and still run the book, what HASPA, so that's very, very important. So we've got that included in here.
Yeah, thank you.
We're coming down.
Yeah, we got some too.
Okay. On the first few services there, a lot of developments, tasks. Well, those two minutes. Well, those two minutes, once the new JPA plays, so they won't have to do so much developing, so maybe they shift some of the funds to other services and then...
That's a very astute point. Once we've got a new JPA agreement and we have a five-member agency, and once we've developed some of the internal documentation, like a board guideline or a technical advisory committee manual, that work is sort of one time. Once we've done it, then it probably will take about a year. So in years two and three, it's true, those funds could be used on other services. And maybe we prioritize amongst all this work, what happens in which years? The, I think we had a question.
Yeah.
Oh, great.
So this is the annual budget, this is the one-year budget. And then every year you have another $200,000. Well, I mean, it's going to go over that, and it needs... So, and if right now you've mentioned that you could pay for some of this, possibly through some of the grants. And is that, is that an ongoing strategy? Is that going to be something that every year you'd be able to pay a certain percentage through grants and administration costs? Or that's just one time to get started?
We have been so focused at the Park District and with this group, you know, with the board, on preparing the JPA agreements, like the legal agreement, that we haven't spent nearly as much time looking at, how are we going to fund this agency? So this is really the first time we've sort of codified what it costs to do these various tasks. Now, maybe the board agrees, decides that we don't need one or two of these tasks. And so the dues should in fact come down. So I guess what I'm saying is, you know, this is one-time cost for 2024, 2025. But I think I would look to the board of trustees to tell us what their priorities are for 2025, 2026. And then we could start looking for grants or changing the budget to accommodate, you know, the dues that we can actually contribute. Because it's quite possible that the grant opportunities may not come through. And so this $200,000 will have to be divvied up in a way that we're going to propose next time amongst the five agencies.
Sure. I'm going to jump on there, I'm trying not to go hard. We've been talking, they say, a lot about this. And it's, I've certainly been advocating all along that this $200,000 is, comes out of grant. And it's really at the core of what the prior topic was, you know, putting in for a grant. We have a hard time envisioning putting in that kind of money on the hard side for any foreseeable future. I mean, this is real development projects that we're talking about. And that, that, that $200,000 budget, I think, is low because if you really start to take, get some traction, you're going to start to need more teams. You're going to bring in construction managers to start to do major implementation plan criteria and things like that. And that's the kind of thing that really has to be funded by outside money. I mean, it's just an expectation that it just has to come from getting a major grant. And that's why that $750,000, I mean, that's, that's the big score. If we can do that, then that's, then we can start to have this real discussion about what is, what is this person going to do? And how many different people are going to be there to help them to do this? Because, I mean, I'm Assistant Director of Capital. It's just like, this, this thing is going to blow up. It's, there's a lot of work to do here. And we're going to spend a lot of money with a lot of consultants before we ever get a shovel anywhere near the draft. We're not even going to the hardware store and wanting to get shovels, you know? It's like, it's like, so we need that front-end money to really make this thing work. And if we, you know, and it is exciting that if we can get that kind of money, and it was my major question in talking about with SFVP about, can we really get this money to like, for all of this kind of advanced, you know, planning? If we could, and we could do it all together, and, you know, it really is a great example, if we could just hold ourselves together in consolidation and demonstrate that it can be done. So I'm really hoping that we get that grant so we can sit down and then really start to talk about real, really putting together a real budget, you know? You know, this might be, they're looking at it as a project, kind of, project. Well, and there was, what you're trying to do is getting a salad, doing this thing, or something, whatever else, you just send this big project. And you're going to be going grants. And then, you know, as time goes by, you know, and some of these are realized, it's very likely that you wouldn't need all the staff, you're all the construction management and all. Like, for example, Hard had a pond, had a pond. And we hired a lot of people to help manage the pond and it's been sound for the construction and all that. But we anticipate over the years, I've got to have everybody there. And they understood when they hired on, that it was going to be the project. So that's the intent, is that it would be that. And maybe that's what, you know, you want to do here in terms of socializing and selling to a few other peoples. This is a project to do this far. We need this kind of staff and support to do this kind of work. And then after that, it might be something a little bit different in terms of maintenance. And actually, you know, in terms of maintaining some of this, you know, some of it, if East Bay Regional already has a trail there and, I don't know, Hard has some of that as well. And, you know, that maintenance would be kind of not as much, you know? Be more, you know, keep your eye out. And then maybe 50 years down, be another kind of project, you know? For the organization to already set up for that, you know? So you could see, you can spurts in, you know, I'm sitting down in terms of what a budget would look like in terms of infrastructure development.
Yeah. All good points.
Got a couple of questions. Travis, do we have any aspirational data completion? Hopefully, if everything fell into place, we can ask.
Well, the grant that San Francisco Partnership is pursuing is three years. So it starts 2024 and would go through 2027. So the $750,000, if we were successful, we would have three years to spend that money. And at the end of 2027, if not before, we would have, our master plan would be implementable. We would understand what the priority projects are. And ideally, we would start to pursue funding for the initial rounds of design. But just to clarify, we've been negotiating our joint powers authority agreement for the last year or so. We're hoping to wrap that work up just in the next six months. So we hope to be a five-member agency, let's say, by, I don't know, first quarter of 2024.
Now, going to the cost right now, as either not being a grant writer, I don't know how often you've come by a grant that as long as we're doing what we're supposed to be doing, which is annually, like, maybe 200,000 a year is apparently what are our costs to to keep the thing going. Is there those kind of grants out there or just the one-time grants is all we're going to be looking at?
Well, I think what Brian was suggesting is that grants to build something could come with an administrative component. So it's probably unlikely we'd find a grant that just pays for our administration at HASPA. But more likely, we'd find a grant that would pay for maybe design work or actual construction. And so part of that could be contributing towards the administration. That's probably more than that.
Good, yeah.
Man, this, so what, what will it take for us to become a five-member agency? I came in late, so that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, thank you for giving me the chance to clarify. So HASPA has been a three-member agency for many, many years. And in the past, basically a year and a half, two years, we've been pursuing growing it to a five-member agency, which would be the current members, City of Hayward, East Bay Regional Park District, and Hard, and adding the Skid Row Abatement District and Oraloma Sanitarium. So we're very close, we've been doing negotiations on a draft JPA agreement with our attorneys and the attorneys for the other agencies, all five agencies. And we're probably about 90% there in terms of an agreement document. But we have this last 10%, and that's the difficult part.
Okay, that's part of the fees, right?
Hardly, yes, about who pays what dues, yes.
Okay, so we're close.
We're definitely close.
Yeah. And then there's a couple others we're trying to reel in, like Alameda Blood Control. And I heard, yeah.
Yeah, I will mention Alameda County Blood Control is a member of our technical advisory committee. And they've been participating, but we'd like to see them elevated to a board member this year at HASPA.
Yes. And that would help with the financing or the fees or the rest of the, for everybody, correct? The board, yeah. More than earlier. Alameda County, no?
Alameda County Public Works. We have a, Taylor and the City of Hayward and others developed a long list and they did a lot of vetting and writing to get to the point where the people have said yes for Alameda County Skid Row Abatement and Oraloma. But there's definitely a lot of potential new members out there.
Okay, yeah, question. So Alameda County Public Works or Blood Control is actually a division of Alameda County Government. So, you know, the people here are elected officials. So when do you have elected, like, supervisor or would that be the target? Because they couldn't speak.
That was my thought, and I don't supervise.
And there's an election coming up. What I'm saying, that's because, because, I mean, where we're structuring it is that it's a elected body or appointed body from elected officials. And then having, like you said, they are technical advisors, maybe they're not... I don't know, we've approached the board or not, you know, because there, that would seem to be appropriate. It's a city that has the council.
That was my thought, yeah.
I can add, embarrassing, maybe it's, we reached out, when we reached out, we reached out to the board of supervisors when we did ask them formally to join. We did not get a formal response.
They did not get zero response or nothing?
Yeah, no formal response.
That's a no-no. The county.
Yeah. So, I mean, I agree, I think we do, having, having executive director to kind of ramrod the, the HASPA goals makes sense. What makes me nervous is we are banking on this one grant. So I think we need to, we should be actively seeking other grants as well. But at the same time, you have to have a plan B. What happens if it doesn't happen, you know? So I think, you know, I'm in favor of going forward, starting with the grant. But, yeah, we need to apply for those, different case, we don't get the grant. Are there, what are the other possibilities? I mean, is there anything in Prop 68 or is there, I mean, even San Francisco Restoration? Is there anything there, you know? So, yeah, we should be pursuing, even though we've got this application in, we should be looking at those things, different case. And if we get others, it would help, we can cover all that together and not, maybe get a few more. So, yeah, so let's, let's, let's think about that too. Any other discussion?
Yes, I, I know that East Bay Regional has used, like, the Stanford San Francisco Bay Restoration Authority. Maybe that was the one I was thinking of, that could maybe the board have done annually.
Yeah, I know that the Park District has used those funds to design the Hayward Marsh restoration. And that grant is finishing up, I think they're almost at 65% construction progress now for that very complex project. So what I'm hearing loud and clear is the staff continue to pursue grant opportunities so that we'll be able to run this agency, HASPA, the way we'd like to with all of these tasks.
So would it be better to apply that grant again as, then five members? Or get Hard to do one part of it and Oraloma or the City of Hayward do another one?
What I'm hearing is that HASPA has a lot of jurisdictional prestige. Like, people know that HASPA's been around for a long time. And the promise of a five-member agency, one that's growing, is actually very attractive. So I think we would probably just wait until our JPA agreement had come to fruition and we had a five-member agency to apply for some of these larger grants that you guys suggested.
Good idea, yeah, good timing.
Okay, any other comments or questions? And is it, do we need a vote for these things? Not, not this one, because really, yeah, exactly. So thank you all for this, discussions, given us a lot of great ideas.
Good ideas, yes. And then, I think, so item number five, our 2023, 2024 annual dues and expenditures. Devin, your show.
Okay. Your show. So what we were just talking about is the future cost to run HASPA. But today, we have costs as well. And that's basically the, the decision by this board to levy dues, which needs to be done formally, so that's why we're asking for a vote. The dues for the last five or so years that HASPA had been $12,000 per agency. So 12,000 times three is $36,000. And we've been able to kind of have these meetings and continue HASPA four meetings a year or more on that amount of money. What we decided to do with the board's approval last year was spend last year's dues on the outside council, Hanson Bridget. The attorney at Hanson Bridget, who's been the ones to develop the draft JPA and negotiate with the attorneys. So my report on attachment four is just a one-page memo that explains that basically they've spent, we spent about $50,000 on the work done to date. And as I was mentioning, we're really close on that JPA agreement. But the fact remains, there's so complicated negotiating work to do about dues and weighted voting, all of which will be coming to you in the next couple of meetings. And so what we'd like to do is two things today. We'd like to, first of all, have you decide that, yes, $12,000 per agency is the appropriate amount for this year, I mean, 2023, 2024. And then separately, to decide to allocate that fund to the cost of continuing the contract with the outside attorney, Hanson Bridget. And presumably, though, I know he'll be able to finish with that amount of money. And any money that's not spent by the attorneys will then be available between now and next June for any expense that the board wants to use. So I'm open to questions, but that's all in attachment four. So we're going to have two, two votes. One is for, to assess, the attachment $12,000 for each of the ten fees. I mean, three is that $12,000. And the second vote will be to allocate the $36,000 as budget to complete the JPA. I'll move, we'll have, we have most for each. So let's do the, this would be a $12,000 settlement for each of the three trustees. I'll take a motion for that. Okay, move by. One second. X-Mon. Devin, you want to do a roll call vote?
Yes, Trustee Romania.
Yeah.
Trustee Hodges.
Yes.
And Sheriff Zaria.
Aye.
The motion passes.
Great. And our second vote is to, I'll need a motion to allocate $36,000 to the budget for completing the new JPA agreement. Moved by Francisco? Yeah, again, and second by...
And the roll call, Trustee Romania?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Sheriff Zaria?
And I.
So the motion passes.
And the new JPA agreement is for the five members of the board.
Correct. Excellent, thank you very much. Okay, item number six, discussion of optional special meeting in October. But we could really stick it to the, the permanent. So just to explain, HASPA meets four times a year. And the next scheduled meeting, this was one of the scheduled meetings, the next scheduled meeting will be in November, specifically November 9. But because we're making such good progress at the technical advisory committee on items having to do with JPA... Advisory Committee on items having to do with the JPA agreement and dues and weighted voting, we'd like to suggest that this board meet sooner than November 9, at a date in October, which will allow, um, Rita Duncan and Jimmy Deng from Oreloma to participate. They're in a conference today, so they weren't able to participate. So without their expertise and, um, and opinion, it doesn't feel right to move these big decisions about the JPA agreement without them. So assuming that they were available in October, I just wanted to pursue the idea of a special meeting, a November meeting with state calendar, and in October, you just talk about some of the JPA points.
I like it.
Second.
I, I've got a second for the question.
Yes.
Um, can we tighten it up to, uh, so just October, what, what date in October?
I was going to propose, I'm working with the Technical Advisory Committee, but either October 12 or October 19. Which is a Thursday, it would be at the same time, and Erica Castillo of the Alameda District offered this room again. So we'll basically be here in about a month and a half.
Yeah, I'd like to, um, have an amendment of your motion. And it depends if it's a good one. What were the two dates again?
October 9, excuse me, October 12 or October 19. You know, presuming that everyone.
Both are good. Okay, hot second.
Okay.
Great, you choose.
Well, let's say both, and then we'll work it out with the Technical Advisory Committee.
We can celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day in October.
October 12, okay. Roll call them. Okay, the second roll call, Trustee Romania.
See.
Trustee Hodges.
Here.
And.
Yes.
Trustee Rosario.
Aye.
Okay, we'll finish it through, thank you. We'll, we'll choose a date and get back to you.
Excellent. Item number seven, old or new business?
Yes, this is a placeholder on the agenda if any of the members of the Technical Advisory Committee who are here present, or Director Andrade, or anyone who's on our Technical Advisory Committee online, wanted to make any announcements or any updates. Anything up on the screen? Okay.
Okay.
And then item number eight, board member announcements. Are there any events the board members would like to?
I have something from right field.
Sure.
Yeah. Walking on the trails on the beach, there are certain areas that look beachable with sand. Is that something that we can explore, where we will take this beachable piece of shoreline and tell people, we have a beach? There's actually sand, there are three areas out there with actually sand. I can, I've told my wife this winter, six thousand, and I'm enjoying this, but, you know, I don't know, I don't know if that's ever been explored. I don't know if it's whether the purview or hustle or whatever, but we have no beaches in here, so let's explore that. They've gone over the. So it's coming in for left field.
Well, thank you for exploring that, or asking us to explore it. The master plan does have different treatments for certain sections of the shoreline, and Taylor's grabbing it now. I feel like, Taylor, you know that document probably better than anybody.
There are not, like, actually, like, accessible beaches like with sand.
Like with sand.
Yeah, in the master plan, there are gravel beaches in the master plan, which are meant to provide habitat and, um, like, stop storm surge from hitting the levees and wearing on the levees. There could be issues would be that it's not like a native habitat, like white-in-beaches and things, and that there's a lot of endangered birds species out there.
Well, it seemed to be, and I actually stepped on and grabbed some. Look, a beach was right there. I don't know, so I, I did, I did take a couple of photos, and in one of them, there's a tide in number five. Okay, so that's my left field.
Well, just our experiences with the Crown Memorial State Beach, which is not a natural beach.
Which one?
Crown Memorial State Beach.
Alameda?
Very expensive. And really, really is unsustainable, probably not going to be sustainable in the very near future, but, yes, but we know beaches.
Paul? Uh, I noticed that you have different elevations, and, um, we have, what, Oreloma, um, as provided as their test area. How many yards or, or miles of, of, just like what Oreloma has, before we have to get creative to do the, um, horizontal levee? I think by Mount Trashmore, it's probably going to be more of a challenge. Like, do you have to go to fill to, to kind of match what Oreloma has? Well, I think you can go up, up, uh, as we are, I forget what they call it, as the, you get out of the, the tide area, I can't even think of what you call that, you're water.
Let me look into it with some of our experts, uh, in our stewardship department, and we can get back to you about that.
You can.
I'll go later. Nothing, I'll just invite you all to, um, we're going to have a dedication of our, uh, two little trail, which is essentially the Bay Trail, uh, next to Ed Markham, if you can show one. Um, I was just completed with a, a grant from Caltrans, and, um, looks fabulous, it has a bookmark. And also, we're, we're going to have a, another, a soft opening of, uh, another project that just got completed, completed, is that the Robert School we have. So, you know, from here, so, uh, patient for those. What was that opening? I think, uh, the September, I think we've got like a dedication on like the day before Labor Day, or the weekend, Labor Day weekend, and then, uh, so it's, it's hopefully, well, it'll be open for, for that one day again. But it's been a great project, and, uh, we're looking forward to, uh, seeing that open again, so we'll invite you.
That's a great story.
It, we actually extend, I mean, there needs to be placed, and you would extend both the pipelines to seven, it's to be fantastic. Great. So, any other, um, items for next meeting, agenda setting for next meeting, anything else? So I'll say that our next meeting will be a special meeting, either October 12th or 19th. The main agenda item will be negotiations around the JPA. Uh, in November, we have at least one presentation about the alable blooms from last year in the San Francisco Bay, and now it's happening again.
Yeah.
And possibly another presentation about the Bridge Mall project. So, a couple of presentations, and then there'll be some other JPA items. So if you have any thoughts for other things you'd like presentations on, please let me know. And I'll take this opportunity to thank Erica and Robert and the staff here at the Skid Row Abatement District for letting us borrow you. So it was really fantastic. We'd like to come back again next time.
Uh, so the next meeting of August 10, 2023 is now adjourned.
Yes, yeah, thank you.